Fantastic. There you go. Have a good meeting.
Good evening, everybody. This is the meeting of the Select Board on August 6th, 2024. We're calling the meeting to order. I will first begin by saying I am John Campfield on the board and not Chair or Vice Chair, both of whom are joining us via Zoom, but I'll be chatting this evening in their stead. And before we begin the meeting, I'd like to remind everyone that the Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask that all members interact with light manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community among all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. And with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Motion to accept the agenda, as written.
Mr. Gilmore, a second, second by Ms. Conley. Because we're meeting remotely, we have members meeting remotely. All votes tonight must be done by roll call. So we're going to start in the room and then go to Zoom. Sorry. So Ms. Campfield, yes. Ms. Conley, yes. Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you, and Ms. Allen Baker. Thank you. Are there any walk-ins this evening? Like to address the board on the matter or not on the agenda? See no hands and no one hands, real hands. So we'll go to the report that the town administrators, Mr. Gilmore.
Good evening. A lovely day. We'll start with our water update. Track track, we want even. Last week was minus two. Reservoir minus fourteen. Last week we were minus fifteen. Rainfall over the past seven days since the last Sunday. The point nine seven inch was measured for plant. The demand for the past week is one point four two one million gallons per day, which was down from previously to one point six point five. Big news this week. Tomorrow, August 7th, National Lighthouse Day, we will be celebrating the renovation of the Lighthouse in Citrus Light. The ceremony starts at 6:30 PM. We'll go to approximately eight o'clock. Starting this morning, most of the lighthouse parking lot are now closed. The barriers are up, the stage is up. The access is now modified and restricted. Starting tomorrow, 7 o'clock, the parking lot will be closed completely. At 5 o'clock, we have killer traffic going out to the lighthouse. Will be stopped excepting residents only. There will be a lot of Rebecca and Lighthouse Road will be two-way traffic for residential zones. You'll not be able to go out and go around the lighthouse. It will be closed. For people wanting to go to the celebration, the show of us, the one from Citrus High School starting at 5 o'clock. And we turn attendees after the event is over. There are handicap spots out at the lighthouse. If you are handicapped, you can see the offices at the end, parakeets. At Jericho, you will be able to access the lighthouse. So it's gonna be a big event. It's been a long time coming. My two speeches, my it's raining speech and mine it's not raining speech. They're both on the same length, so you worry about it. If you're on, it's gonna be a great event. If you can't get out to the lighthouse, be able to see it from other parts of town. So please be ready. And we'll get to the lighthouse. We'll let tomorrow night after almost two complete meetings online. Other happy news, I'm pleased to report that Nancy and her financial team have won an award for outstanding achievement in popular annual financial reporting for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. This award represents significant achievement by the entity in order to be eligible for a PAPA. The government must first submit its annual comprehensive financial report for the Government Finance Officers Association. Certificate of Achievement for Excellent Financial Reporting Program received a certificate for the current fiscal year. Each eligible reporter is reviewed by judges who evaluate and report based on the following categories. Reader appeal, understandability, distribution methods, creativity, and other elements. The PAPA is basically our financial reports boiled down to about five pages and are very easy to read formats for people who want financial advice. If you want our website, look for the PAPA. You're going to understand where our money goes and how it's on financial. So congratulations to Nancy and her team. I think this is our first one. One of our first PAPA, but I think we'll be getting this heavy act and do some good jobs. So congratulations. Got questions about our finance, go to the town website, look up the PAPA. You get that information. Recreation Park is announced in the fall and lifeguard schedule for the May of the summer as our guys start to return to school. The final day of lifeguard staff in our beach will be as follows. I'm on August 11th, Beach of Beach, August 18th. Mine is August 25th and Peggy's September 2nd. The director of park also wants residents to be with the fall registration for recreation program opens on Thursday, August 22nd at 5:30. Fall brochure is available for residents on the recreation park webpage. We will be getting an update on the purple dinosaur today, but we are still waiting for that one pot that we need. I know DTW has restarted the contractor multiple times. We've got an update and we've now received one. Once that pot is in and is installed, we will be able to open the purple dinosaur. Please be patient. It's ready to go with that one exception. We do need that in order to get our certification and handle the pot. Kevin Kelly was in last week, last meeting, so we want to let people know that the two charging stations at the library are now open. There are two stations. Each station has two ports, so we can do 4,000 at a time and the rate is 33 kilowatts per hour. From the Hot Master, next season's slip waitlist signup for the Tom Raiders is now available. Our registration must be done online. If you visit the Hot Master page, use your phone or tablet, scan the QR code. Check your email for constant confirmation after you've set your request in, and you can contact it if the slip is available. That will support your vessel. Assignments will start on February 1st, 2025. Tennis court project is continuing. The ground, the earthwork has started. The old tennis courts are out. The lights will start to be installed today. We got the full light to put up. The last one there tomorrow. So we are making progress. The project is scheduled to begin in October, November. Right now, our main goal is to have the concrete work completed by the start of the school year. Because there will be a lot of trucks involved in that, so we are pushing at that time as quickly as possible. The appliance rebate program, we extended that to this fiscal year, 6:30, 2025. Rebates available for qualified purchases of clothes washers and dishwashers that are ranked on the energy star most efficient 2023 annual list. Qualifying toilets must be certified by the EPA. Details on that can be found on the website, epa.com backslash water sense, backslash residential toilets. More information is available on the Water Popper webpage, as is the application for the rebate. If you have any questions, call the Water Popper when you actually want to apply something. Make sure that it is on the message. Mass Pop Republic Health has informed the Citrus Board about that a mosquito pool has tested positive in Citrus for West Nile virus. In addition, they announced that the first human case of West Nile virus has occurred out of Western Massachusetts. Go to the webpage for the public, found the public health department, found the right name, calling them on the news. It's the link to the Mass Pop Republic Health. Give you information on West Nile virus and how to keep safe from mosquitoes during the fall season. Water health beach sampling, all beaches are open and good to go. The water contractor has returned to Jericho Road to do the laterals off the water main. They'll be working on that for the remainder of the week, except tomorrow. They will not be working on Jericho Road tomorrow. We're gonna sign them someplace else to try to do some work so they don't complicate. This is getting out of the way. But they'll be working on that this week and next week. We have those laterals done. That contract will be going very well. Hoping to wrap that up in the next couple of weeks. Then finally, I have to get a happy note. CP's Pizza on the Driftway next to Riverside is scheduled to open in their new location further down the Driftway this Thursday night. So if you're there, stop in. The new restaurant has seating and alcohol license. Still gotta tell my wife it's an hour and a half to get pizza. It's like, I'm sure of that. I'll go pack out. But congratulations to them. I hope they do a great job. If you get a chance, go check out the location. That's what I have for the seat.
That is a lot of good news. I'll open up to the board. Do you have any questions for the town administrator? Mr. Gilmore?
Just my compliments to Nancy and her team for another award for a lot of effort. Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to point out that Jim mentioned three things tonight. The Purple Dinosaur Playground, the tennis courts, and the lighthouse. All of those projects would not have been able to have been done without the Community Preservation Committee, all the hard work they did and their contributions to the town. And I particularly want to thank the citizens for voting for all of those projects. They're all worked out. They're all, you know, great additions to the town. And if I may, I'd like to correct the mistake that I made yesterday on the town video, and that is I credited the historical commission with getting the grants for the lighthouse. And in fact, it was the historical society. So I'm sorry for that. This is so Danny, but you know, they're both really hardworking groups. But it was historical society that's been doing the young ones' job and the likeness of people to learn. So thank you to all. If he was coming. Ms. Harrison?
I do not have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Goodrich?
All set. Answered my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I will just let folks know that the update that Jim just provided and that Ms. Conley is referring to is done weekly on Mondays. And you can get that on Citrus Community TV Facebook page and YouTube page. If you want a real quick synopsis of what's going on in town every single week. There's also a written version of it on the town website. Takes a little couple hours, but that's I get close to put that as well. And I want to commend Nancy and Lisa for that award and note that this is not the first financial report that has been awarded to the town under Nancy's supervision. So we're very fortunate. With that, we will move on to our first item on the agenda, which is acceptance of a donation for the Purple Dinosaur Playground. Is Marie, yes, Marie is joining us via Zoom?
Oh, she's zooming.
So she is, and Marie, you've been made a co-host, so you can unmute yourself and video yourself whenever you're ready. Well, she's coming up. The background of this is the Purple Dinosaur Playground that the administrator spoke about. This funded primarily through CTC funding. It's almost ready to get open. But the private Purple Dinosaur Playground have also raised some funds privately and like to donate them to the town. And I'll let Marie explain what they'd like to spend that money on as we consider the donation. Are you red? Are you, I see your box. There you are.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
There you are. Are you gonna join us video?
I'm pretty sick with COVID, so I'm not joining the video tonight.
Oh, goodness. Well, that's, that seems to be happening. Are you, I just teed you up. Would you like to explain what you would like to spend the $13,273 that you raised on?
Yes, of course. So as mentioned in the executive action request, these funds, what we had put in for the playground initially and with the budget from the amount donated or the amount that was approved funding from the CPC of 260,000 didn't include signage and seating. And we noticed as part of the reconstruction, the signage at the main entrance and the seating at the park also seemed to kind of be in bad shape. So we really wanted to fundraise and help to make that have a fresh look. So this includes redoing the main sign, a very similar design, adding in a Doug's Louie Foundation sign. The autism communication board, similar to what we have at other playgrounds in town. And we're still working through quotes for different types of seating options, but most likely like picnic tables and benches in the shaded areas.
That's, that's very exciting. I did want to know about that, that one of the signage installations will be to provide accessibility for autistic visitors. And that you will be putting a plaque on one bench to honor one of your major donors. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. The PJT Foundation was the major donor and we would like to honor them on a bench.
Great. I'll open up to the board. Are there any questions?
Is there a timeframe for all of this? Do you know?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Is there a timeframe, Marie, for all of this?
We're working on getting quotes right now. I'm sorry, what was that?
He was, he was asking if there's a timeframe, what's the timeframe for the installation of the signage and seating off will be?
We expect probably the September timeframe at this point, but we are still working through getting quotes. And I think what we've seen to date is things just take a while with these sorts of vendors. So we're optimistically hoping for September.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Ms. Conley? Yeah, I'd like to say that the board's a community preservation project should be somewhere on the signage since CPC.
We have a separate sign?
We have a separate sign.
Second sign for CPC.
Okay, great. That's it. Thank you, Nick. Any other questions or comments from the board? Nope.
That was gonna be my question. Thank you.
That's great. Well, as I, I'm delighted with this project because many moons ago, when I first had young children, I worked with the committee to build this playground in the first place. So it's great that your group has stepped up to get a bill overhaul it desperately needs. And the only thing I'll add to the board is that you may notice that DTW will be overseeing the installation. So we're sound with the council. Any questions from anyone else? Then I will have to do a motion. Move to accept the generous donation for the Purple Dinosaur Playground. Is there a second?
Second.
We'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Campbell? Yes. Ms. Conley? Yes, with gratitude. Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, most appreciatively.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you, and Ms. Allen Baker. Thank you, Marie. We really appreciate it and look forward to joining you on the playground when it's all open.
Thank you all. It's been a pleasure.
Take care, Marie.
Yeah, feel better.
And when we're all COVID free.
Yeah. Oh, my goodness. Our next item on the agenda is the emergency sewer connection request and our water health director is here. Cool.
How you doing tonight?
Good. See, we had a couple on this street. Like to give us the overview of what is requested.
So this is a request for an emergency sewer hookup at 33 Even Day Road. They had an inspection done by Rosanna Davis Sanitary Pumping Company. And it has been observed during frequent pumpings that the following failure conditions existed, described in P. Tennessee MR 15.303.1A1. There is backup of sewers into the facility served by the system or any component of the system as a result of an overloaded and or clogged soil absorption system or cesspool, which would, based on my professional judgment, result in the system failing entirely five. We did reach out to Will over at Sewa, and Sewa did say that they had the ability to hook up. We reached out to Will to get his comments, and I believe you do have a copy of them. And I did reach out to the homeowner and he's aware of the requirements that they're gonna have to do as far as the brine of pump. And he does know that they should work with Will, the engineer, to make sure that the hookup is not broken. I reached out to them this morning before I came here.
That was, that was my question because Will indicated that it's going to take some creative engineering area to make this work. And he's satisfied that they can reach you there. Does the board have any questions about this request? Saying none? Any questions from the attendees? All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve an emergency sewer connection for parcel identification number 50-1-9-0, 33 Deeper, Deeper Dan Road. Penny connection agreement with the DTW with the homeowner's engineer, Dr. Mayor.
But Mr. Gilmore is third second. Second, then Ms. Conley. Roll call vote. Ms. Campfield, yes. Ms. Conley, yes. Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you, and Ms. Allen Baker. Thank you, too.
I'd just like to add one additional thing since I'm here that it seems to be that good time. We did have our first positive horse for Triple E in Plymouth. We were notified around four o'clock this afternoon. And we also had our first human case of West Nile virus up on the, I believe it was in Boston. And again, the best protection people can take is personal protection. Make sure your home's mosquito safe, no water, standing water. You go out in dust and dawn, make sure you eat warm clothes, warm pants, warm sleeves. Mosquito repellent feet. And just be aware that it is out there. It's mosquito season and it's gonna be here probably in about, you know, 60 days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to our interview of candidates on board commissions. Our first is actually Mr. Jack Whitaker, who is, I don't know why we brought you in, Jack, because we are well familiar with your work. And as I understand it, you're currently an associate member on the historic commission and you seek to become a full member in the shift of an opening. We, I think everyone knows your qualifications and your expertise. So if you could just tell us why you are seeking to have that position.
Okay, I've been an associate member, actually, since October of 2021. And therefore I've participated in all the discussions, all the house community issues when you're building a tear down. And the one thing I haven't been able to do is vote, like to add that up to the vote, unfortunately, if I didn't concede, which is definitely a problem. And so, you know, I'd like to have that up to you, if you remember. And I think you know about the background. A lot of the most important things we do, a lot of things, one of the most important, almost every meeting, one or more residents is coming in asking us to tear down that structure that's a hundred years old. The whole, the assembly is a garage, parking lot, very elaborate, all the, all houses. And that's, I do have quite a bit of experience with historic buildings. I did work with Vice President of Administration at University of Puerto Rico and State University of New York's American College, where we had historic buildings and where we tried to create facilities to mine, and then which we brought them in. Narkon in particular sits in Fort Seymour to work on and judge it out, but it's a campus. So it's loaded with historic buildings and all missions, pieces of historic buildings. Again, the historic convention can, if it judges the building is historic, it should be, certainly we can delay when the Washington broke through. I've got that later for a while. It's sold good. But we were very successful in negotiating the mission, the safety, very nicely by our across the Dr. Longwood, Spats Road. You know, this thought they had to tear it down by a big block. So let's do that.
And Will, I just want to check. So this, the opening will be to complete a term or will be for a full three-year term? We just, logistically, Wes, I believe for a full three years. Yeah, it looks like it's full, full three years.
Yeah, I think they were all, all up on the point and much of the protection.
Well, we, we were very sad to be hearing Mr. Brand's passing, your history with this group that is, you know, there's no, there's no on the job training involved here. I'll open it up to the board. Do you have any additional questions, Mr. Whitaker? No? Okay. Jack, as you know, we typically wait until the, at the end of our meeting for the business to make our motions. And you're welcome to stay here with us or we will allow shower. We'll call you in the morning with the results.
Yeah, you know, we, I know they head home. I have an office here from California to Virginia.
For you.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you for your dedication, Jack. Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Our next, we have, we have three individuals interested in water waste commissions. And Ms. Ernest, Thomas, and Nicholas, we are. Why don't y'all come up and cover? This be the AKA. Ernest is. And we have another candidate that's not here, is that correct?
We have another candidate that will come next meeting.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, yeah.
Okay, so why don't you gentlemen, if you don't mind, introduce yourselves. And then typically, if you've been in this thing, it's what we do. We'll ask you just a few questions. They're the same questions, so you can, if you'd like to debate, you can take turns. So would you please introduce yourself?
Hi, Tom Arkhan. I live in the minus section of Citrus. I'm a lifelong recreational voter in Citrus. I currently have a Dory in Citrus Harbor, which I've had for 20-plus years. Seen the town grow up, especially in marine environments, and I have some concerns. And I can sit back and watch other people take an active interest in determining my future. I can do it myself. So that's why I'm interested in water business.
Good evening. I'm Nick DiMascio. I live on 16 Rogers Drive in Citrus. Been there about, well, 14 years now. I'm moving. I also have a boat in Citrus Harbor on Maureen. Not quite as long as some gentleman has. I think I've been there maybe 20 years. I love it. This harbor is wonderful. It's welcoming. I recently, recently retired, as I've explained before, to get on the bylaws committee. I want to get actively involved in the town, see what I can bring in terms of additional opportunities with my past experience in all. I've been voting for 50 years, very familiar with voting, so I just want to see what I can do to help.
Are there particular issues that, I'll start with you, that you, let me reach my hand. Have either of you attended the meetings or reviewed the current issues before the water waste commission?
Yeah, I've attended several of the meetings recently just so that I get a better feel and understanding of what the commission does, the committee does. And I can't say that I have an active concern right now, but I'm listening and just want to be a participant to bring better new ideas.
I do have that concern, and that's the fact that we have not had a major weather event in quite a few years. But I think we've probably become rather complacent. And I look at the harbor and I look at the density of the boat population in the harbor and the proliferation of the marinas that have taken place. And if we ever do have a major event, especially if it ever aligns with the FEMA 2016 flood zone charts, we're in trouble. We're in big trouble. And I think there's some things that can be done to mitigate the damage that could possibly occur. But I mean, unless we take an active role in this thing, it's business as usual, right?
The water waste, you're on a less than heavy lift committee right now, but the meetings are usually once a month in the evening. Is that the problem or is that a non?
No, no problem.
I want to open up to other members who, especially our liaison to water waste, if you have additional questions, we have to get. Is that you, Ms. Harrison?
I do, yes. I am the liaison. Welcome. Thank you for volunteering for this committee or this commission. It's very important. I just have a question. A lot of, a lot of the water waste commission is regarding kind of like balancing a budget, right? Our, our waterways enterprise fund and making priorities, priorities. What are your thoughts on, on the initiatives that we have to balance as far as paying and moving forward? Just curious your thoughts on that and your experience.
Start with you, Tom.
What kind of initiatives? Give me, give me an idea.
Oh, gosh, like a new marina dredging.
Dredging, definitely.
Dredging marinas, any sort of, you mentioned density of boats, partly dredging to make, to make room for boats or be able to like have as many boats in the harbor, because that's actually an access thing, right? Like we wanna, we want the most people in Citrus to be able to experience the water. And I think that's a lot of what we're looking for, as well as, I will also say, the commercial fishing industry is, is a big part of it too. So making sure that we have the necessary resources for the commercial fishing industry, whether it's like ice at the docks or, or different, yeah, many different things.
Well, a couple of things. Dredging, I think, is important because it always comes up, what, every 10, 15 years through silting in the harbor. And part of the problem there, I think, is the density of the boat population in the harbor right now. There are some parts of the harbor where there's plenty of room and there are other parts where there's not a lot of room. And I'm speaking from experience because at least in my mooring, there used to be a 38-foot boat on it at one time. I have a 30-foot boat on it. I have problems getting to my mooring when the wind is blowing in a certain direction because I have to pass through around other boats to get there. So I think some things could be done there as far as the commercial aspects go. Wasn't there an ice plant on the dock at one time?
There's not now, but possibly.
It wasn't the town here a long time ago.
A long time ago.
Not at Jericho, like for example, one of the things is Jericho, you know, the Jericho ramp adding, so.
And then, then you look at Citu Boat Works, the parking lot there, we have a building which is open to the public. That parking lot is terrible.
You should have been, you should go there now, it's been improved.
How's it been? I hope it's been paved, because.
We cannot pave it, so that's not an option, so.
So let's, that's for waterways today and discuss, that's why we need.
These are all the, these are all the discussions at waterways. So there is the, the land as well as the moorings and what. So, yes, there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot to be done, and I was just curious your thoughts, so thank you for that.
Let me, let me turn it over to the new opportunity.
By attending some of these last meetings, I've been able to understand much better that there is a long-term, five-year plan. I've heard the discussions on that. It's important that we have a stand, there's limited funding for the commission, the waterways, what they can, cannot do. So understanding some of the priorities, fitting them in the long-term, five-year plan, seeing where's the best way to spend the money so that we can enhance the safety and the welcomingness of the harbor is very important. In my past career, I was responsible for a $150 million revenue budget, and I think it was about a four, five million dollar overhead budget. So I'm very sensitive and experienced with funding, I know it, I understand it, and it's critical to the town and the harbor that we understand how to prioritize spending.
Great.
Thank you.
Like, other members of the board have questions?
Yeah.
Generally speaking, have either of you worked on other types of committees, either in town or in your other experience?
Well, I'm presently a member of the bylaw, bylaw review committee, right? That was my first venture, and it had to evolve within that. But my, my work, my previous experience, I ran a energy company. It's a lot to do.
Well, the reason I ask is because sometimes working out a committee is far different than being an executive, for example, where you can actually tunnel them up to, whereas on a committee, you have to be a lot of it and you have to get and take. So, Tom, do you have experience working on committees?
Not in the town, but in state government I have. I consulted for decades, state government, and a lot of that, because I was a consultant, I didn't have the, the results to say, we know the list, it was participle.
I just find it's not always happened, everyone's wheelhouse to be a committee person. Some people are, as I say, more executives, so, thank you. Mr. Gilmore, Mr. Goodrich?
Karen, just on my question about working on different committees and also, I guess I'll, I'll do this to add on, what, I guess, what's your understanding of, I guess, the timing of, or the pace? And how, how deal with the pace of dealing with town government committees and things like that? I think we're a little bit of that.
Easy, it's government, it's time and money, and those two things don't usually go as fast as the commercial setting, that I've realized.
Nick's not there?
Yeah, I'm lying, I'm literally finding that out, the same thing. It's much more, it's slower, much more community involved, you know, listening to everybody else along the way, but it is definitely a slower process as it moves along.
Yeah, I just don't want people to get frustrated sometimes and understanding that, I think, is, is important, so, got it, thank you.
Well, no, I can just say, I'm lucky, I think the last person called, I believe they answered. I'm impressed with both of you. I do advise that you, you need to stay organized, bring your passions to the meeting, but understand, as we've just mentioned, that this is not a road race. You've got to really plan these things and make sure that your successes are achieved in the right amount of time and the right money, basically. So I wish you both walk this time forward. And you're both very worthy.
Yes, you are, and thank you so much for coming and speaking with us. You will note that you're having a little more intense interview. That's because we unfortunately only have one opening on this committee for a full three. There's some people that want to be renewed, and one candidate that still hasn't been interviewed. So we won't be making a decision tonight, but when we include the other, it may be sort of like in two weeks, then we will look at the full roster and, and make a decision of who will be serving for next year. As always, given to this, whether you're appointed or not to the board, to the committee, you are most welcome to attend and participate in this discussion, every meeting that the town holds is in a public meeting, because as Mr. Whitaker said before, you may not have a vote on what gets decided. So, thank you both for coming, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for standing up. Welcome.
And Stacy is interested in the beach commission. Okay, lift our looks, which is?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Turkey-free.
Turkey-free, Mr. Ed.
Turkey-free.
And this commission is five to seven members, so there are all things on it. So if you wouldn't mind, you stay in this, your address, tell us why you're interested in the beach commission?
Okay, my name is Stacy Madden, I live at 18 Sycamore Road in Citu. And why I am interested in the beach is because in words of Ken, I am beach. Everything I do is related to the ocean and my private life. I have three passions besides family, which is arts, culture, and the environment. Being, because I get ocean sickness, I'm not on the ocean much, so I'm on the beach. But in reality, I want to do something at this point to help the environment, and I think there's no better place to do that.
Have you attended any of the beach commission meetings or?
No, I didn't show anything about it until I'm on the email list, the email, on the email list, I just are, I read about what the beach commission did and said, oh, this is what it's.
Great.
Yeah.
Questions for the board? Well, what would you suggest is the number, if you had a number one priority for our beaches, what would it be?
The effect of the mine, the pain on beaches, I mean, you take a look at, I mean, when we just did a mine it, when by putting in the sand, you know, it's a little hard to walk over there, and I'm a walk, beach walker as well, so I go to mine it a lot. And, you know, you have to get down, some people have put some holes in the sand to get down to the, the little tide, I think, when you walk on the beach. So I think it's the beach erosion, the impact of climate, the attack of the ocean during storms, the impact that has on sea walls, so those types of things, from my perspective, would be the biggest issue right now.
Thank you. We've got some, for folks that don't know, we get great applications from folks interested in your background, is, is, you obviously understand that government works and all of that, and.
I work in nonprofit right now, so I think government's a wee bit slower than nonprofit, but we're pretty slow.
Have you had a chance to look at the charge of the commissions of each?
I did, I read it, I saw that this request for brands had a grant, I have a background, so I'm doing government grants for my organization right now, so I'm going to do government grants.
That's very interesting because the beach commission, unfortunately, you know, both our board's commissions recommend things for the boards to connect, but they don't have a budget, don't have any of that, but that's, that's a very helpful skill. Any other questions or comments? Any shaking?
No, I don't.
No point. And Bruce?
We will, we have another applicant for this commission right now. Yeah, we have one, I need to ask. So I don't know if they're a fee. I think because we have, our folks are, are remote, we will, our normal practice is to wait at the end of the meeting.
Right.
And so we will do that, and we will stay, as Mr. Whitaker is invited, otherwise we will reach out and let you know.
I have to go back to regular work.
Thank you for coming in and introducing yourself, we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, looking forward to it. I also, because of the question you asked the gentleman before, I was on the Citu Cultural Council for a year, so I understand what it's like to work in town.
Yeah. Joelyna, is that right? Vermont, your sister city, hit there. Thirty-eight, thank you. With, give us one second, thank you for being here, nice to see you, to name an address and why you're interested in joining this, you know, boring committee that doesn't do anything.
My name is Joelyna, and I live in the Egypti area. I'm voice to low, pretty much lived here all my life. I'm a second generation in favor, I've here staying here in seventy, early seventies. I started volunteering in the league this year, that's fun, both learning about my culture and supporting the committee. I think it'd be a fun opportunity. I learned that are such a difficult role.
And have you served in any other board committee? Just a question, I haven't answered. But you have, as you said, you've been long, Karen, do you, have you attended the meetings, the actual meetings, the planning meetings?
I have attended.
And what do you see for the future of this, this Citu City Committee?
I think just free awareness, community, and education, of favoring the committee that live here, there are so many of us, and we've been through so long, I think it's very important.
Great. Questions? Well, I see that the chair is here, do you have anything to say, though?
I personally suspect that children in the ocean be perfect for those.
Right.
Have children that are at the high school now, who are signing their age to our class events, and, you know, the teenager that very time, she had very time, I said, we will go to the end, her grandparents, and when we came, when you hired us at the same time my parents did, so we have pictures, and, you know, Citu, and when you see she actually, she'll be very happy.
Well, I, I have to say, I think Angela is one of our board dedicated recruiters of people for this committee, but it's, it's great to have a chair who's active in the committee, thank you. Any other questions? I'll just say that our, you know, what is this, two years now, that this is, this group has the leadership of the chair, has really hit the ground running, and to be part of this free agency for cities, there's a lot of opportunities to just really focus on the diversity that we have in the community. So, thank you for showing up and for raising your hand, and as you heard, we will do all of our, maybe at the end of the seat, and from the side of the board, thank you.
Thank you for standing up.
Thank you. So fortunate. Books away. And our next, are we ready for the 7:30, Jim, or should we?
Yeah, everything's going down.
All right, our next item is a summer INI project. You know, you know what, sorry, I know that a lot of folks wanted to agree this preparation, so I think if the board has no objection, I'd like to, like, leave it at the regular time, 7:30, because I think some people are going to be logging on, they want to get a presentation. If, if we could just flip it with Nancy is prepared and Kevin is talking about CND break, if that's okay? Is that our opinion, guys?
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, because, yeah, so we'll just flip the INI presentation and CND discussion, because I could get contacted by the president to, and to zoom in and listen to the conversation. And we always want to step forward. Well, of course, I mean, I'm sure it was about INI, it's another school spot called Citu, right? Well, yes, exactly, applications for North H, yes. So then what we're doing is we're going to jump to our 8:15, which is to a proposal to reduce CND disposal rates for 60 days in a pilot program. And thank you, Kevin, for coming. I jumbled our agenda because I know some folks are interested in the. So the board would go to page 31 of our backup. I'll ask Nancy to outline what the initial proposal is. And I would just say that this came up because the board was concerned that our revenue, we raised rates for construction to bring deposits at the transfer station, and we saw a noted decrease in the use of that, and that has significantly impacted the bottom line of our, our revenue. And Nancy?
The board direct us to find other methods to try and address the deficit we have in the fair description, price on the two-year at the rate we're using, year, this, in June. We are very concerned about the drop in CND tonnage, so one of the concerns, as the board brought up in the meeting, is that the raise in the rate for CND, they cause people to seek other avenues, whether it be in a private dumpster, a private hauler, for their CND, or calling to a neighborhood community as a local rate. We do give a lot of activity analysis that we have in your backup, saying, okay, if we reduced our rate for pilot periods of 60 days, what would that impact us? So we looked at 13 cents, which would make us match the kind of market rate, 14 cents, and then 15 cents, we're currently at 17, according to the volume of time, our nearest editor of marketing looks at 260 all the time. So if we were to go to the 13 cents and match their rate for September and October, we would have to bring in at least 74 additional tons in order to offset the loss in revenue. If we chose to do it at 14 cents, which is the $20 difference rates, we only have to recover an additional 55 tons, and then the 15 cent will be 34 tons. So that's what's the point today, is to consider, we want to do a private program of reducing the CND rate, and advertise that, because we can, we can invite people to come back to us with the CND. Over 60 days, I'm not that concerned about the revenue loss, we already have that, our revenue issue that we're hoping to catch for us. If this works, great, then the board can revisit and perpetuate their current change. But that's something for, for us to discuss tonight, and I know Kevin has some promise, he knows to make it well.
No, I mean, we're, we're open to giving it a shot, see, see what happens. You know, we're always, I suppose, works, it works, I am worried, you see a lot more dumps for haulage now, and they're all, it does seem easy to pick up the dumpster and it's a load solve, but we never could have.
So are you saying that you think that there may be just sort of market conditions outside of the pricing that are, that has caused reduction?
My personal thing, I, you know, it's hard to say, we've, we've looked it up and down, we've also talked about it through social recycling coalition, and we had that discussion. You know, I, I'm not giving it a shot for the two months and see how we, how we try to.
I'll open the board, I have some questions, but anyone? Well, Mr. Gilmore?
Just a couple of things that I could put out there for people to consider, if, if the rate is going to go. If the rate is going to go down to the test market. Are we going to be? Are we going to be basic? For example, if Marshfield right now is where everybody's going. Oh, everybody's going. I don't know if that's really true. I don't know how. How much savings can we have taking refuse from situat builds down to Marshfield. Versus two pennies versus. Four pennies. Per pound. But if you, if you. If we're all going to enter into this, if we think we can attract more people that aren't using us already. Yes, we're going to benefit the ones that are using us already. They're going to save some dollars. But is this enough to attract people, businesses, audience that are not using us? That's the question. So if you see that. My immediate inclination, if we were to go this way, we would need to go with the in-between rate of fourteen cents. Which puts us underneath the cohesive rate and a penny of the market rate. There's cohesive down there too. That's my, just my.
Other members of the board, Mr. Goodrich?
Yeah, so this. I've learned a lot the last month on this and some of you may find this hard to believe. But anytime I saw someone around town with the dumpster, I would pull into the driveway and try to talk to someone. And so Cedar Point, Junk King, Doctor Disposal, Clifford and Sons, Waste Away. Everyone I talked to knew precisely every other town. And what the price was. Everyone knew Marshfield. We never even used to have these prices done. How many cents per pound? But that's what everyone did. And I didn't know, you know, precisely what it was per pound either. But. You know, going through. Everybody was like, oh, Brockton's easier, easiest. They're the lowest. Bridgewater was this. And so everyone said for the one cent or two cents, they're absolutely going to go where they where they need to go. So that's why I'm at like the thirteen.
Mrs. Harrison?
I would go for the thirteen. I also know that when I had a dumpster, it went to Marshfield. Because I actually asked too, and that's the, that's where they're all going. So if we really want to test this out. And we really think I would go with the thirteen and also advertise it.
Can I clarify one point? The dumpsters will not necessarily become a facility. We're not set up to take dumpsters and unload, unload dumpsters manpower wise. Our equipment setup wise, where we would be beneficial to residents is they need to rent a dumpster or follow material. To with a trailer, you know, like some roofing contractors say they own trailers and they come in and hold it themselves. But with the manpower that we have, we wouldn't, and we're not, we're not permitted as a commercial. Disposal facility where we could attract people with dumpsters. A lot of them have been at the pine tree. Or they go to Brockton, our bigger facilities. I don't know if Marshfield takes dumpsters. We would be handling the big thirty-five dumpsters on the transfer station.
Yeah, well, I guess I assume what we were doing is that as the dump trucks, the. And the same roof versus small on practice. And I think if you look around, it's a question as to how active that part is right now. But I guess my, my overall question would be. If we're planning to do this in October, is that gives enough time to advertise it or to make, make it known to people that. There's a special sale going on. I mean.
Well, I would think that's a board up there and that's probably the biggest one. So right up front.
So the follow-up question on that is, why sixty days? Is that maybe between getting the word out and, I guess I have two questions. One. Why sixty days and two? Is there a point where you? Were overcapacity, have overcapacity?
I'm going to let Nancy handle that after I say, you know, we sat down, Nancy, myself, Andrew and Jim, and we chatted about it. Kind of said, what if we tried it for sixty days to see how, what effects it would have. I'll let Nancy step in.
I'm seriously fearful of doing it for any longer than sixty days if we don't make that potential. Because we already have a revenue problem. I don't want to make it any worse. September and October, it still gives us the November town meeting if we have to do something like that budget like produce. We still have the ability to get an article and do it like we did last October. So, all right, we'll then do it, but. I want this to be successful. We'll try to make it successful, but in case it's not. What time you be able to recover, what the board have time to think about what they do, their next steps are.
Thank you. This is why you get awards, but I get your credit. Did the board have any other questions about this?
Yeah.
Yep.
So I just wanted to be clear. So somewhat, so. We have three, we know we have at least three companies in town. Of folks that own dumpster companies. And none of them go to situat. They all go to Marshfield. And I know they're the smaller, like was it five yard? There's a five, a ten and a fifteen. So you're saying that. We obviously can't take the ten and fifteen, but those smaller five. Yard ones, are they, those were able to take or were not able to take those at all?
I don't believe we're able to take those, just how they're, how they wind up. So I, I think our direct competition is do they get the dumpster and pay a hundred and fifty dollars to have it there for a couple of weeks, maybe a few times. With convenience factor. But we're not, our permit doesn't have us specifically set up as a. Commercial. Type set.
But Marshfields also, do they have, aren't they similar?
I was not aware Marshfield was taking dumpsters. I think they take trailers, but I don't know about dumpsters. And I can check that out. I know Sean was over there talking though, but he's on vacation. So he met with Marshfield and discussed their operation.
And that's, to me, that's the kind of the impetus of all this, knowing that those. You know.
You know, we can't take the large dumpsters because of our, we can't take the smaller dumpsters if they can dump. So, you know, I, I look at like the tax credit for film, right? Until we give the credit, we're not going to see who's going to tell. Without doing it, no one's going to tell. So it's worth a shot. And we'll see if they get in there and dump them. If they don't, they're going to save money. We just probably give it a try, so perhaps.
All right. I'm not hearing any objection to the idea of reducing rates for pilot program. Any objection? Any comments from others on the board?
I would like to change what we, if in fact we're going to do this and there are some restrictions, logistically speaking. Then I think, yeah, I think you should go right down to the same wire down to the Marshfield rate if we're going to do it. I was holding out for a pen.
No, I, I stack my information to back up the saying that it's only thirty days, sixty days. I hear the three piece, there's the proposal to do to match Marshfield's rate of thirteen cents. And translate to two hundred and sixty dollars a ton, which would be a significant haircut from what we're currently offering. Would some of them like to make a motion?
Move that the select board lower the rate. For C and D disposal at the transfer station from the seventeen cents per pound or three hundred and forty dollars per ton. To thirteen cents per pound, two hundred and sixty dollars per ton. Through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second, second, motion by Mr. Gilmore, second by Mr. Conley. This requires a roll call vote. Miss Campbell? Yes. Oh, sorry. Please take a more, make a lovely motion, but it's through October thirty-first. We have that, that we're making effect for the. What you can do. I just want you to be aware of that. Would you care to amend your motion?
For the months of September. And October twenty twenty-four.
And then the best of Gilmore, second. Thank you for that clarification. Roll call vote. Ms. Campbell? Ms. Conley? Yes. Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Almater. Thank you both for that and get the word out there and let's see what happens and we'll revisit this at the beginning of November. We are now going to go back to our seven thirty discussion, which is a presentation and an update of the sewer infiltration. I not say. Infiltration and inflow project and the north city sewer. We have Will Brett, our sewer superintendent. Kevin Rafferty, our head of D W and Robert Rafferty, our engineer from Environmental Parks. Gentlemen, Laura Shores.
Thank you. We're going to let the blog connect up and he's going to give us a presentation. The presentation is going to go, and a lot of people see a lot of trucks all over the place.
I'm sorry, Ms. Campbell, I.
We can't hear anything in the room.
I know, I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Campbell, can you hear me? If you can, I need Mr. Rafferty to unplug the HDMI. He needs to join through the Zoom. To share his screen. He cannot use the HDMI. Mr. Rafferty, do you have the Zoom information? Mr. Rafferty, I can help you if you need, or I'll tell you what.
If ever from the technical difficulties. One moment while we work our technical difficulties.
Let's see if they work on the technical difficulties. You want to move to the eight thirty?
I'm sorry, which?
The eight thirty designated.
With that's taken.
He's not officially.
Yes.
Good suggestion.
Our eight thirty-five discussion vote is to ward. Well, do we? Yes. Ward a contract for engineering design services for phase six of the water main design to Weston Sampson. Fifty-nine, oh, that's. Heather, I should tell us what this contract is.
I'll tell you all about that project loudly. So we went up to bid, we put in our P L for the next design project. And basically, we're going to continue down three A. I know we will tie in for that provide new loop of duct line pipe or replace one of the old transite. As part of this design plan, we are also looking to redo the old forge neighborhood in Stern's. Stern's Road. What we'll do is we'll design that private plant forward, we'll have that on the shelf. And you'll potentially do it as funding becomes available. Our first priority for the pipe is going to be some money to first parish. So that we can tie in our water wells that are on this V A and bring them back up to the treatment plant. So that that's often how we can be able on those loss levels. And that's part of our process that we put together. With our, with our deep ass deduction.
I have a number of questions, but I'll open it up to the board first. Anyone have questions on the water main replacement? Let's see, then Kevin, there were three quotes on this.
Yes.
I have several questions. There are three quotes on this and. Some were, this one was significantly loved. Which is good news, but I would like to know what your comfort level is. Obviously, we've worked with this vendor many times. But why do you think that they fall up in, did they have the same? Were they bidding on the same thing?
So they bid on the same thing. We put in our P L, it's about twenty pages long, very specific, it's entirely information we need. Probably on the water projects, Weston Sampson, one of ninety percent of our jobs, they designed themselves. So they. They've done a good job. They've got a cap. They've got the standard information and, you know. Unfortunately, we have another engineer here for environmental boxes that fall out of the water. But maybe they just weren't hungry enough to go out to the drive and Western Sampson. I, you know, all three companies are pretty qualified to do it. And typically, we look at it as, as possible.
Yes, there was just such a.
No, it was, but everything. You know, it was, everything was filled up. The R F P were comfortable with it. Sean had reached out to them and said, you guys comfortable with your face? I said, yep. This is also, part of this is going to be to permit. We're going to put a couple of telephone calls on three A so that we can connect up to the treatment plant as well as connect our. Create an extra loop for I T for our Wi-Fi system that the I T system goes to.
And the original design for the water treatment plant, did they anticipate we're going to use valves to the plant and this is?
We, we didn't take that into consideration originally. We kind of separated that. Project in the first place because we thought we could get better prices installing the pipe on our own as opposed to doing it in the. Because that would just be building contractor, subbing up pipes to a pipe contractor and then marketing up. So we figured we could have a transit without the market and if the market brings out.
And you did mention that this is a design and engineering, this is not the actual construction.
Correct. It's physical design.
And that the old porch network, that old porch stern's neighborhood. Will benefit from this design, but may or may not be constructed at the same time down the road.
Even if it would probably be down the road, depends on what we have funding. I think we'd love to do the whole thing at once, do the whole project at once. But we probably won't do what we do, prove it as an ad option. And we would try to get the pipe on three A first, but we know that's in poor shape. And you would also be able to connect our wells. Who pipe that's a patient who would think that.
Other questions for on this matter from the board? The audience? All right. Does someone like to make a motion?
Move that the select board award the contract for engineering design services for phase six water main design to Weston Sampson for an amount not to exceed eighty-four thousand, two hundred dollars.
So good.
Moved by Mr. Goodrich, second by Mr. Gilmore. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Campbell? Yes. Ms. Conley? Yes. Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Almater. Thank you very much. Are we, our technologies?
And I, and I have to apologize to Bob because, you know, this, I apologize for the occasion. So I, you know, and so. Fine, I, no, but we'll.
But we're lucky to have somebody qualified in advance.
He's in the sewer to buy another water pipe.
All right. Now we're going to go back to our eight thirty discussion. I'm sorry. No, our seven thirty discussion, sewer I and I and as we're situated project. Of the round line. Hopefully everyone in Zoom land can see this. Can you see this, Mr. Goodrich?
We, we can see it. Great. It looks fantastic. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. I will turn it over to Mr. Rafferty.
Thank you for your patience, hopefully you're here. And my love. Despite not winning the job, I'm still here. Yeah, as Kevin said, we want to talk about the infiltration flow program. We're going to give you some background of what we've done, where we are. I'm going to talk about that's done to some of the flows of the plant. And then talk about why we're doing this, what the results.
And I will ask you to speak about this, the Zoom land.
The microphone doesn't do anything.
It's actually on. It happened really fast.
And so I might go, preface this a little bit before Bob gets coming. This is one of the directions we received from the board. When capacity was falling through to start working on I and I, do what we can to improve our loads and try to make. Something to stop and eventually getting well settled. But it's the way we are and what we've done.
I'll try to project. Zoom's easy when you're not in front, I think. So. We're undertaking two phases of the I and I program. First phase, we completed the investigation years ago. The spring, National Water Main was the awarded contractor. We came out and did some work in town. Right now, the last couple of days, we're doing warranty inspection of their work. And then we've also had some CCTV, which is the internal pipe TV and camera done in other sections of town. So far, we pumped non-toxic smoke into twenty-five miles of the sewer and saw where that came out. It's not supposed to come out. So that's. And so where that came out, it's not supposed to come out, so that's one good. And we've uh cambered about seventeen miles of sewers. Now, we started focusing uh in the top sort of northeast area of the town where the old sewers are. Everything outlined in yellow on this figure is on the phase one. And phase two are the darker blue lines. And that was uh working in conjunction with Bill, his team, uh where they found uh clear water flowing from sewers, that sort of thing. Like, you know, walk any water in the sewer, it's supposed to block that. Uh, it's just the sewer to come out, it's supposed to come out, so we don't want to do that. So this is where we focused doing our camera work this, this summer, and we have a little bit more to do in those blue areas. Um, so right now, um, phase one is pretty much all done except for a couple warranty repairs. One thing I want to highlight is that we were looking for inflow, which is uh surface water flooding, that sort of thing, and infiltration, which is the brown water coming in the pipes, two different things. The smoke testing found over seventy locations where we thought there might be some explicit clean water coming to sewer. This has never happened in my career, but the sewer department keep kind of making care of all of us. Right, so that's like, never happened before in thirty years. Uh, so kudos to the sewer department for taking care of that. And they just did it, like, they just went out and took care of it.
That's right, they fixed it.
They went out and notified all the homeowners and the building people, told them what they had to do to get rid of it, and they ran the whole program. They got the touch, it was one thing. Um, so we found about four hundred thousand gallons per day of clean water coming into the basement. We are not going to get it all, right? But we did find out where, where it's really mostly coming from. And over seventy percent of the water coming into the sewer is either where the building ladder, the ladders connection through buildings, comes into the sewer or further up in that ladder. So it's seventy seven percent, but pipes are actually in pretty good condition. It's all these connections, and some of the joints in the main pipe are leaking. So we're finding it is more on sort of that one more pipe coming up from this hill into the hill. That's where we're seeing a lot of graffiti. Um, and that's why we're not going to get, we're not going to get four hundred thousand gallons of water. We can seal this thing up totally, and there'd still be a flood or something, who can support it? And we're trying to get it to a point where this, so this system is integral, and we don't have all this, 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 this. I'll, I'll show you a little bit about that, but um this little figure here, this picture, yellow is where we investigated. Those highlighted yellows and the water drops are these, right? And there's four categories. There's a beaver, a river, a runner, and a gusher. All right, runners and gushes you don't want, but we've got plenty of them out here. So all those water drops right there, and each one of them was a, a vacuumed out, which is where they made up a connection through the hole. And every one of those on this one line going up to the bottom was that one of those finish. And so that's pretty thin.
Yes, of course. Um, is that bad construction?
No.
It's just, you, over years, the, the connections just deteriorate?
Yes, what happens is, in the older pipes, um, they really need to stay, stay wet for the baskets between the pipes to, and it stay flexible. And when you get groundwater going up and down, some of those gases drop out. And that happens a lot, and especially on the building ladders, because they move with the frost and that sort of thing. And that's, and there are more joints, but at this location than anywhere else. And that's what, that's what it's.
Well, it sounds kind of intuitive. You don't want the water, but you need it better.
Right, right, you want to seal it out.
Yeah.
And so if you think about it, if you ever, you know, swim in a lake, dove down deep, feel like pressure, right? Or if you have ten feet of water with the same in the sewer, it feels that pressure, and that water's going to come in and affect it. So what we're trying to do is seal the inside of the pipe with a monolith seal. Okay, start.
Bob, I can interrupt you for one thing. A lot of our old pipes are clay, uh so they're clay pipes. The newer pipes that we put in, we were doing, uh, see the point, it was all PVC, you have less problem. You see, the older clay, especially with clay services, but sometimes it'd be two, three foot sections, and a lot more joints to them. And I think that, that gives us a lot of problems.
And those are the ladders.
Those are the ladders, and a lot of them are on private property.
Right.
So that's.
Now, when you, when you're selling their houses, they have, they have to have an inspection.
They have to have an inspection.
They have to fix it at their own cost.
At their own cost, too. If it's a clay pipe, typically, the clay pipe is literally passed, it's used for by it. So that clay pipe has to almost be replaced automatically because the, you know, it has a lifespan of say, four years, it's sixty years old. So it's, it's, you know, it's.
Oh, and so people understand that we're not trying to penalize homeowners with sewer connections. That's, everyone who has a septic system knows when you sell your house, you have to get a title five inspection in it. With nails, you got to pay for it. So, you know, uh, because I've had questions from realtors, especially about fairness of it. And I, I explained it, well, you know, septic system is failing. Someone has to pay for it, it's not, and this is something.
Will's not an excellent dog, he's meant for a lot of the realtors in town, and it explains to them why we're doing it. Because if anything, it gives more capacity for more people to tie in the sewer by us doing this. And it, it opens up more, more expansion.
And I, I do want to take a moment to thank the realtors for helping us communicate that message to all the residents in town. People interested to move in the situation. Uh, it's a huge effort to communicate with them.
Question?
Yes.
So are, are there, two things, one. It's constantly, absolutely, that's probably one of the most meaningful changes we've done in the, uh, as a board, and it's, it, this shows right here how much uh, effort and how much progress we've made. So it's a fabulous program, and Will, thank you for doing it. Is, are there new building codes or, or so, or is there anything we can do or anything that we should be thinking of? To, so we're not, we're not pushing this problem further down the road again? Are there, are there things that we should be thinking of, like, oh, someone is building new? They should really go down, you know, use a different type of pipe or go further down to really make, to really strengthen? So just so this problem doesn't happen again?
So what we've done, Andrew, I'll, I'll take that. It is, we changed a lot of our sewer rules and right, last sewer rules and regulations. So a new building typically go with PVC pipe. And you're going to see a picture later on, what we do with the joints is we actually paint the joints up with a special tape. So that even if that gas can opens up, that rise up, you know, the tape is still protected from getting into the joints. So somebody fifty years from now is going to say, wow, these guys are really thinking what I put this type in. We're not going to see the benefit of it, somebody won't future. So, um, you'll see that later on.
Yep, why don't we continue with the presentation, unless you have another question, Mr. Goodrich?
Nope, uh, perfect, thank you.
Uh, just one point, the old clay pipes, they were putting by hand generally, so two to three feet a section, PVC pipes that we can feed. So we have a lot, a lot less joints. So the phase one versus phase two, um, just size and quantity wise, phase two is about seventy percent size of phase one. Right, and we're expecting it to be about the same. Uh, one big difference is that uh we didn't spec all three hundred manholes in phase one. We didn't do anything on that, but we found a few more during the construction works. We put, we're going to put a batch together to seal up some manholes. So it's, you know, over a hundred manholes that we've done.
And that's something else we didn't see the point, we didn't use typical free gas manholes. I don't know if I saw, I mean, we used large biode last year also, there weren't no joints that there is still being yet. So that would be a, a future aspect that, that we will state.
And this is exactly what Kevin was talking about, that's a building service, cleaning out the surface. Uh, and it's all that, that tape, we put on every single joint. So if it moves, that tape's going to be between the water and the pipe, right? Um, the other photo is, now, this is from the outside, right? The other photo is from the inside, and this is just the lateral connection from the main. And at the very top here, that's dirt and roots, and that is leaking water down. So, I'm making liquid water down here. And then we went in and this, wow, it's right there is where that joint was. So this is a line that fills inside there. We wrapped the whole main pipe and this goes up a couple of feet. This is, we do this with every, every pipe. In fact, in phase one area, there were some areas in your town, a sewer's down the line in the main pipe, but we didn't do this. And those joints blew. So we went and we just did all of those, okay? Um, here's another example, I, I think I've shown these photos before. Again, down, uh, that's Egypt Beach parking lot, and Egypt Beach, or Egypt Avenue. Um, the dot, you know, the water leaks, the water drops, that's getting replaced, blood out. Uh, fully replaced, right?
So we'll have, actually, we'll be up there tomorrow, starting the work, we're going to set stops, over already lined up, so to begin, and we move all that pipe. So we'll be in ingredients for a while, but we think we'll use savings in uh added water that we're going to get down.
We looked at the price versus constructing and how you're going to get out, this one just particularly impressive. And there is another small little area down at the bottom there with a full, sort of pipe coming up towards the beach, big manhole on the beach there. That leaks, we're trying to figure out what we want to.
It beats two houses, well, private services, but it's, it's right on the beach.
So these are examples of what water's coming in, we say ten feet of water about it, and it's just shooting right in, right? So it's a couple of gallons a minute, you know, gallon minutes over a thousand gallons, quarter gallon a day, that's up, okay? So, yeah, I should have given you the warning. I'm going to show you graphs, the next three. On the left side, the vertical is yearly gallons a day at your wastewater plan. Okay, at the bottom is every month from December twenty thirteen, December twenty twenty four. And this is the twelve month average. So let me explain something. This little point right here, say in March twenty eighteen, is the average of flows in March and the eleven months before that. So you know, if this point jumps up like that, March had to be really hot, so all the other months were much lower, right? And when you get to eighty percent of your permit flows, you're supposed to have a plan in place to do something about. And another project we're working on right now is that you probably have a waste water plan, and so you plan about upgrading your key plant and getting it, about the stuff. So we're looking at it from both ways, trying to stop the flow that shouldn't go to the plant and from an end, you know, trying to look at a plan to see what can we do? How much capacity can we have, how much can we get out of this one? To maximize it. Now, I'm showing you this because you can see in, say, in twenty eighteen, the flow started going, brrr. What happens, show you this, this is your annual precipitation. All right, so you have your forties and the thirties and forties, then we get to sixty and sixty two inches in a year. Your average here is around fifty, maybe more, right? We're seeing these spikes at sixty. And, and that's where your flows go way up, and that's when it starts to make some problems, and that's directly where the community fall. And these are also coastal storms, some of your inundation, right? Um, I'll give you one last, look at this, this right here in the top, it's where you can see the point, it's the bottom. And right away, flows down, they, that's not, I'll see the point, that's also rainfall. All right, and we start going back up again, the flow. Unfortunately, this spring, had a massive storm, and it just threw the whole charge right off of, oh, let's go, two, three, March and April. But we're using that to get, hopefully, to get money out of this thing, help, help fund this, okay? So it's good and bad, right? So, where are we at? We can confidently say fifty thousand gallons a day on average come out of the system. Most of that's receiving a point back in the day. We're really targeting the peak phase, okay? But when you look at taking fifty thousand gallons a day out, see the point? You allow new connections to come in, and you put fifty thousand gallons. So we're right back where we started, our premier Singapore, which is probably the most effective I N I program in the world. And it costs, it costs one, isn't it? So.
So we are, we, we've taken the fifty out, but with all the, we, it's back out to the fifty, or even, yeah.
That was the intent, so.
Yeah, no, that was the intent for the mask works grant to get that.
To contribute to see your point with the goal of creating capacity to do uh, or a, a transit pass, which was down.
So it worked out.
Great, great plan.
Great plan. So now people are looking at some, right, and that's most sixty five thousand gallons. We're still looking at the I N I and still looking at taking out more and more flow, as you see, it's a trend, right? So.
And let me interrupt one second, so sixty five thousand estimate is for full build up?
Full build up.
Based on all of our, our good planning department's work.
Yeah, it's been a lot of work.
It's been a lot of work.
So Kevin asked me to sort of kind of kick that off just a little bit, about any progress issued. Now that we're working on the flows and trying to find capacity for it, I'm working with Will. One of the things I got to tell you about the, tell you about the sewer department, they manage these flows. They hold flows in your collection system, right? Not a lot of towns do that. And so that's always on the forefront of your mind, only so much can be treated. We have to deal with that, so it's something important to do. But we do a good job. So we have capacity to go back, some people build giant tanks and hope they're, they're doing it in the sewers, mine. All right, so North Stewart, North City Stewart, permitting is going to be a giant task. And that's by design, there's a lot of words on here. It's V I P permitting, there's the Massachusetts Environment and Policy Act, which is clearinghouse for all the other agencies. And they, you have, and the environmental impact report that cleared that V I P process back in ninety five. Unfortunately, it's old enough that you don't really get any points or any grants, anything like that for it. So, um, your next seat of the M P will put you in line to get better points and get better, you know, money, better access money. One big part of this is also going to be the M B T A. Unfortunately, right now, the M B T A is sort of terminated, and there's some. So that's why I say it's going to take you a year or more, once you get to where you submit your design plan for it, and get your permits at least. Because they're, none of the agencies that I've been working with, the Mass D E P or anybody else, is, they're going to the very end of their statutory limits. And sometimes the passing of the U K. Some things are taking a long time.
I interrupt there one second. So we talked a lot about not using the pipes underneath the M B T A for a host of reasons. Is the contemplating now that that is going to be there?
No, so we're going to be working within track area when we do most city with, as well as going underneath tracks, like up the other side. So we'll just be jacking a pipe underneath, um, you know. Right, Will and I have gone to a, um, New York, um, which is, which is New England wastewater, um, water drive. Uh, and actually, Will spoke, he, he had, he, he spoke in one of the meetings, we went to the meeting, but the meeting just for Will's was out of Reading and North Reading. Remember exactly, I'm pretty sure it was Reading. And they had railroad tracks, and we're talking about how they had a leak on the railroad tracks over a two hundred foot area. By the time they get done working with the M B G A area, it spent over a million dollars to do like a hundred, you know, to make this fair. And they had their whole sewer system down, and it was just a nightmare, and they were saying how hot it was for work and have a super line right on the tracks. And, and that's what we'd be facing, and that's, that's our biggest concern. We don't want to have failures in a pipe that could be problematic in the future. You know, again, somebody fifty years from now is going to be saying, thank God, these guys did right along the tracks. You know, because as the pipe starts to fail, it ends up really problematic.
Yeah, I just wanted to there, I thought that was the expectation.
But we're still going to go on deep track. And remember, anytime we're excavating and the boom of that piece of equipment is within a distance, near a train, you, you have to have uh M B T A personnel on site to watch it as, as a safety factor.
And I gave thirty feet on each side of the tracks.
So one of those permits, that's a line for processing.
And it's, you can.
Yes, and they'll, they'll take their time, they'll, they'll really get into the, when, when we have to run the railroad tracks.
So this is.
Of course, I'm sorry. Um, Jim, maybe this, you might have something to say about this. Given that the M B T A and state have been jamming the milk, zoning changes down our throats. Um, do you think they're going to be more flexible in terms of what they're willing to do to make some of this stuff happen? And I particularly point out that North City, uh, you know, we've made all the zoning changes and we've done as much as we can do. But if you don't have the sewer capacity, especially in North City, because we wish to solve the sewer, what, what? Is there any traction to be gotten?
I think there'll be more.
Flexible?
I think there'll be more flexible? No, so I think they might expedite it a little more, possibly. Yeah, the MBTA, the word flexibility doesn't mean that much, um, but I think there might be pressure from some of the other state agencies to move this permitting law and expedite it, man, because it's gonna be a long process.
Because we can make all the zoning changes we want based on the MBTA and the state telling us what we need to do, but it, it's not, you can't do it.
Yeah, if there's no sewer in our building, so.
Right.
I, I think there is a chance that the team against pressure will move more quickly, but they're not gonna cut.
We would highly recommend getting the MIPA office regulators, everybody's gonna be in permanent, hold a sort of kickoff meeting about the permitting agencies, and get all the schedule lined up. So once it's in their hands, it's out of our control, but we can get it to, you know, whoever it is, can get it expedited into the agencies and get them coordinated, so they're not seeing one for our. And this is, I mean, to, to do Mossituate, to get that sewer to connect it to your treatment plant, and it involves a comprehensive wastewater management plan, working on that facilities upgrade, treatment plant, you already have your approach and, you know, connection bylaw, which is, which is great, use that in front of the money through, right? So, um, I think your position is just gonna bring us out of time at this point. Once the CDP is, you know, gets this final say, then you should be a bit eligible for more now. But it's already part, Mossituate is already part of your old planning guide. So, and get some help, I think, with this thing, but we should get a CDP and be about that.
So, um, this is our next step, we have the RFP all written and ready to go. So on this, we can't just award it to Bob, because he's a nice guy, um, they'll have to bid it against Western Sampson, some other companies, so he'll stop and settle up really tight, and we'll do a full evaluation on that project. But this is the actual area we plan on, can you put that back up?
Oh, no.
Yes, I know, I know what you're saying.
I just wanna see it, so if anybody in the audience would ever see it.
Oh, and so, while he figures that out, we, we'll figure it out.
So this, this, I'm sorry, this is, this is the area, um, that was picked up, it's gonna be sewed through, uh, Ohasa if we did that. This was the area where I believe the sixty-five thousand was estimated. Um, you can see Gannett Road, you can see Country Way, and kind of the entire area of what we're looking at.
This is the area of our process.
Yeah.
Yep.
So Kevin, for the people, and I can't even make this thing, for the people looking on TV, this is essentially the Mossituate, uh, village area.
It's just the Mossituate Village area.
And I know we have the planning board represented here, so I won't get it exactly right, but it's essentially Mossituate Village area.
Correct, and we've included, uh, the loop around Water High Lincoln, and those three sides, pretty tough up off there. Um, we would incorporate all those, and you walk to Gannett. And probably, when this work does come out, um, I know we would be looking to replace some of the water pipe on Gannett out, go down further, so that we, we would bait it once, but a lot of, a lot of I believe that we've done is covered some of those areas already, so. We didn't do yard house painting, because your dog said no. So we, 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 we went back and forth a lot on this, we, we were trying to minimize what we could do. If we do too big in the area, we're not gonna have the capacity, because right now, our capacity is way up, because the groundwater has been so high. We're at about ninety, ninety-nine percent well, it's the latest and greatest. We're almost worth the threshold of our permit now, but that's where the wettest months, and then again, it's raining again, now we have more storms coming up. But we're hoping to see a decrease, I mean, a couple years ago, we were in a drought, and we go a lot lower. Now we're getting hit with, uh, with right hour up, you get the flow.
Yeah, we're at one point five four out of one point six, with like ninety-seven percent.
We would have that to the point, in Vermont, Pennystroke.
In Vermont, Pennystroke, so that would be, that would be determined, because.
So what was the question, well, the question is, when the sewer Mossituate, where would connect to go plant? But that's what we're deciding on the, the design right now, is to do an RFP if you do the design work.
So what we, I can, I can address that kind of, so what we would do is, we would do an evaluation. Um, we, one of the things we have in there is an evaluation, how to get it to the plant. There could be different ways, you could either come down countryway, swing back over, or maybe we could go down Gannett Road, pump it down to Gannett Road, and went to from the squash to pump station, and bring it in that way. But we have to look at capacity, and make sure those pump stations have it, and that'll all be addressed in the design, you know, product design, best way to bring it home.
How long is this gonna take?
You know, I'm thinking the engineering, since we have one of the engineers who's probably gonna bid it, I would, I would guess a year, a year and a half.
For the design, just design and design.
In design, what was I talking about, right?
Yeah.
And then, once designed in, you can start putting all the permits in to MBTA, EBR, everybody else.
So I mean, how many years before?
You guys, you guys, let's set this, let's go.
Sorry.
Sorry, we, we go side hard, and nobody in TV land can hear us, so.
I believe, uh, first what we see feedback and approval on is, is the parcels to be provided sewer service. Uh, cause that we would like to include in our bid package, so we know what we are designing for. Uh, and if, if this is the area that we're going with, then we can, we can plan for this, but if this needs alterations, that may, uh, factor into how we convey the waste point, so. Depending on how the map gets drawn, it might be more convenient to relocate that upstate.
So, I just wanna reiterate something that Mr. Capert has said at the beginning, is this board, uh, worked very hard to try to come to a regional sewer agreement with our neighbors. Uh, that effort, if the door is open, we can continue to have those conversations. However, we have been convinced over many, many, uh, failed attempts, that we needed to address the problem internally, and the more directed this step, which was, what can we accomplish to revitalize Mossituate? The area that's defined here is the Overlake District, um, that is a multi-use, multi-housing and retail that the planning, um, bar, uh, planning board put forward, uh, many years ago, so we're in place, we're in performance with the MBTA community access, I think, so far.
Yes.
So far, and the, by including the side roads, uh, for at Lincoln, um, it also addresses another problem, which is pollution, uh, and migration down to the Gulf River and ultimately out into, uh, Roasat Harbor and the ocean. So it addresses many, many concerns that we've had. By keeping the area within a certain amount of gallons, that we could, we could, we, we demonstrated that the town has been successful in the Cedar Point project, that we work on our implementation issues, we can create a capacity. So the board has directed that we march in that direction simultaneously, to shorten the timeframe as much as possible. So, thank you very much for this presentation, I hope it helps to, you know, set that table for the community to understand what we're proposing, and, um, that if we wanna tweak anything, what's the timeframe again for the RFP?
Um, I typically give them thirty days to evaluate it and.
Though when you were gonna release, you wanna be able to say.
I can release it, you know, if, if everybody's comfortable with this Overlake district, we can release it within a week.
Okay, so we'll have a conversation, I might open up to the board and ask their questions, and then we can talk about that.
So without me going blind and cutting each of these through, how many parcels is this taking care of?
Excellent question, um.
Hundred?
I, I thought it was sixty-four, but I'm, I could be lying to you, I, I don't, I don't know if we're talking right.
And we will, we will provide an Excel list of all the parcels.
And then, can you explain to me what the blue striping is versus the, so, melon green solids?
Uh, the shaded blue lines represent low-pressure force mains, so areas of E1 line of box.
Those are very easy questions.
Something, well, yeah, I guess I would want to suggest that, given the fact that the planning board has done all the zoning work on Mossituate specifically, I think the planning board has all of these parcels identified, correct? In terms of, uh, what the zoning, what was done for MBTA, and I think it might make sense to make sure that that one matches the other, um. And frankly, you know, I do understand the issue of the big parcels and their, uh, being in the Gulf area, um, but again, I, I'm not sure if those parcels are part of the Mossituate, the MBTA, what, what do we call it? The Overlake Street, well, that's another term, oh, yeah.
That's, that's, and, or that's.
No, it was the MBTA Communities Act, and we had to change our zoning to allow for greater density in certain parts of Mossituate, but I'm not sure it extended all the way out to those bigger parcels, right? It did not.
Wasn't those big apostles in the back?
Yeah.
Most of that's marsh area.
Yeah, it's all marsh.
It's almost all marsh, really, you're just looking at, uh, small apostles along this, if you look at the top of the map, it's the ones along the, the roadways.
Okay.
And you have the two roadways that go down, a free road that's that go off Water High Lincoln that go down. That would have been, but those are big apostles, uh, that's all marsh, one of those.
Non-developable marsh, right?
One of them is Water High Lincoln, right, wherever the bend is, it's a big apostle, it's like at the top, and that's Water High Lincoln. That has two structures on it, we wouldn't worry anymore.
That's not the Gulf, that's we all did in conservation.
So perhaps maybe we could, well, we could, we could go back to my original request, which would be to have another map that really indicates where you're searing, where you're hooking up.
So I, I believe in, we did, so the original Overlake District was provided, but it was split into the BP back in the seventies or eighties. That was carried over into the Ohasa thing, that was just the Overlake map we carried over to this breakdown of what we wanna do, so what, whatever.
This, this is actually a reduced area. Uh, so this, this is where we left off the conversation with the Mossituate region sewer, um. And, and this is approximately half of the full Mossituate area, and the nineteen ninety-five.
Right. Uh, before I go to end, it's, I wanna say, do, uh, Mr. Goodrich or Ms. Harrison have anything they'd like to ask?
I do, yes, um, I just wanna make sure I heard correctly. As far as timeline, a, one, a year to a year and a half for design, and then a year for permit. What would something like this take as far as time to actually complete? Like, actually, once you put the shovel in the ground, or you accept the, get the permits to put the shovel in the ground? Or backhoe, or have whatever equipment you're using?
I'm, I'm gonna say it's probably a two-year project. Well, what are you, what are you thinking, I mean, I'm thinking a two-year project.
Yeah, this is tricky.
Yeah, and it all depends on the contractor, and if, if they have to build one to two pump stations, it's hard to say, because we don't have the design. The pump stations could be, could take a little while to build also.
If you're looking three to five years, Susan, from the time you start to being done.
No, I, yeah.
Once you start, uh, getting ready for the construction, then the planning board will start getting all the filings from the possible owners, trying to match their project being done the same time as ours, but from tonight, once they get rid of the RFP, it's not in three to five years, design permitting construction.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Goodrich, any other questions?
No questions, just thank you for this, this music to my ears, this is wonderful. Uh, yeah, so it's a, I get that it's, it's the smaller, um, size, what was talking about, but it's, this is perfect, I love this, how, how we're designed on that, on that side over there. And yeah, just to figure out if it's gonna go Gannett Street or Country Way, this is just great info for, for folks to realize and see, so thank you, everyone, for the work.
Miss Verma.
Oh, can I say one more? I did wanna say thank you too, this is amazing, super exciting, um, that we're this close to getting sewer in Mossituate. I do wanna clarify, is, are we talking about the entire area in green here, so also the area up toward the marsh? Cause I do think that is important for conservation, as well as clean water. Yes, okay, thank you.
Miss Verma, Anne Verma, so. I would like to think if we consider pushing sewer down, down Gannett Road, talking about Water High Lincoln and the Gulf, et cetera, we down, uh, Gannett Road, you're going to, we're gonna need sewer, whatever, out of the Gulf River, this is right there, and it's a big source of pollution. So, you know, it's one thing to put band-aid upon Water High Lincoln, but let's go a little further, not necessarily. You're gonna have to go down, uh, Gannett Road to go to hook up to get to that squash pond, if that's the way you're. Yeah, it's my book, I don't know what.
Correct, we'll look at every option, and we'll have the engineering firm catch it, look at every option, what we can do. And that's not to say, you know, when the design obstacle system, that we can't oversize our pump stations, so that we can do an expansion in the future, if we get the INI down.
I would, I would think, and we have to look through the design case, it's a little bit, you know, to say we're gonna add these many more is premature, I, in my opinion, and you're probably wrong with us, because I know this, but it seems to me that if we, um, put the RFP out with the anticipation that we may want to sewer larger, so, you know, I don't, I don't know how you write that, but.
We would, we would meet with the engineering firm before we would the project, we would say we, we want design considerations, that we could potentially expand in the future in one of the days. And, you know, just be something, instead of running a six-inch pipe down Gannett Road, they might do a ten-inch pipe. Or, well, you know, a bigger pipe for the force main, or they might have a dual system when they do the pump station, so instead of building one, they can only do seventy-five thousand gallons, they did one to do two hundred thousand gallons, and it's just, you're, like, you're paying to the increased size of.
But incrementally, right.
Our goal was to do this, sorry, our goal was to, to do this area and keep it as tight as possible, so that we would have a better chance as our INI goes down, because the more we expand it, it's great, but then we gotta take more INI out of the work.
Does the board have any concern about, um, does the board wish to have other eyes look at this map before we issue the RFP? Um, maybe have planning board, or have, you know, have Will take a look at what they, you know.
Will is self-generating, he generated it.
Well, I had asked originally, and just a few minutes ago, for clarification, which I was told I would get. So hopefully we'll get that.
Which is, you know, the amount of parcels?
Yeah, what are the parcel, what are the actual parcels that are being accommodated, because with the eighties, I wasn't really paying attention to the old plan, which is now this plan, which is going forward, so I'd like to catch up with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there other, um, questions or concern from the board about this, um, proposal, proposed RFP release?
I still am not clear, you know, who is going to identify the parcels, other than that, that have been identified here, uh, that's where I think you're asking about the planning board to tell.
Right, how are you gonna, how are you gonna provide us with that additional information? We've done some discussions, but I don't see, back, who, who compared with the assessors and come back, um, I would suggest we.
You would be accurate.
Right?
I'm sure it will be accurate. However, they go.
Are there any other questions or comments from, um, could you stop sharing, you know, just so we can see that?
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, are there, I'd like to open it up, I know that there are some interested parties listening, are there any other questions or comments from the public? On this matter? Seth, is anyone, or?
Uh, Ms. Canfield, Ms. Canfield, you have no virtual hands raised.
No virtual hands, any? No virtual hands, any real hands? Okay. So I, we, this is great. And we're all very excited that we've made this progress, and the board is wrangling this piece with your help for a very long time. I would propose that we put this on the agenda in two weeks and just have that conversation so that Kevin is in a position to release the RFP as soon as possible. Is there any objection to that, Mr. Chair and Ms. Vice Chair? Can you hear me? So I'm proposing that we put it on the agenda again in two weeks and have a chance to look at the, the map against the assessors' lots and make a decision on whether to release the RFP.
I guess, what are we trying to learn by by delaying? Like, are we really gonna, are we gonna be qualified enough to say, oh, really that parcel or not? Versus, I mean, Will's looked at this, everyone else has looked at this for fourteen years. I don't know, personally, if everyone really wants to wait, fine, but, you know, I trust, you know, planning has, has looked into this years ago, and we've had other plans rolling around for years, and now we've had the pros look at this and here's where we are, but you know, if people really want to look at the assessors, it's it's up to the board, but that's kind of where I am.
All right.
I would prefer to move forward too.
Ms. Conley, I'll just ask a question. This, so if we decide tonight, it's not like this is written in blood, right? I mean, even if it goes into an RFP, if we find that somehow or other a parcel was not, you know, included.
So part of what the engineer will do is they'll do a full evaluation of it, and it could even be Bob's screw. So if Bob's screw, we'll judge us on the expert, we add a parcel, we detect the couple parcels.
No problem.
So, you know, no, I mean, there's a little, a little flexibility, but once that design's kind of in and it's perfected, we're, we'll, our.
I want to talk about Water Can, what, once the design is done. I mean, believe me, I understand that we're along with the process. It starts to really cost you. But my question is, I just want to be sure, this is, it's a lot to digest, it's a lot to look at. And I just don't want to find out in, you know, a couple of months' while. You made the decision then, now you don't live with it.
So I, I hate to sound sneaky or anything, but like, if we come before this board in six weeks and say, we want to award this contract to five of the partners, or Western and Sampson, and Aaron would say, we want to add five parcels, that's, they can still do the job. If we added five parcels, don't think they would say no, or say we want a three-sat vice at that point. Well, Will might know better than that. You don't think you'd turn down the project for that as well?
Absolutely. It'll probably change anyway during the design as you move forward. Must a survey comes in to find out what you can do. So there'll be some tweaking of the boundaries, maybe.
Right.
So if you get into the design, you might, the engineer might say, you need to add this because it just makes sense. I just know about areas, whatever. So it's a dynamic process.
That's really what I'm asking.
I just wanted to make sure, because that's the board, that everybody knew the areas, so we're all going in the same direction. I didn't want people saying, why aren't we doing some of that, or why haven't we gone down this way, or these other areas? We minimized it as possible.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure the board understands that. Whether or not the general public is going to understand that, it's just that we're gonna have to do a lot of explaining. That it's not as big as we would have liked to do it. And if people are worried about the environment, we should have been able to modify it at Water Street. But, you know, that's not in the cards based on the trans, the transes, whatever that word, stubbornness of Opasas. So we have to substantially change and make this a smaller project to make it work for North Cituit building an area which is desperately in need of being redeveloped. And had we been able to work, Opasas had only cooperated, and we tried hard not to insult them in public, but it's been awful. And, you know, there, they thought there are issues, and we would gladly have helped them. But, you know, now we have to go our own way. So.
I think I'd like to revisit my request. Here's what I, we faced on our last meeting. A street that was not completed some umpteen years ago. You've shown me a picture of an area, you've identified it as something that goes back to the eighties, scares the hell out of me. It's not clear enough for me to understand what I'm looking at. Now, if you're saying, I want to move forward on the RFP and some of my valued colleagues do as well, I have no problem moving forward on the RFP, so long as I can look at this thing and make sense of it as soon as it's presented to me. But I don't want to hear about a street that didn't get finished within our, within our documents. Don't want to hear about that. Don't want to hear about a parcel that was left behind within that street. That's my concern. So if we want to move forward, I have no problem with that, but I, I just want to see. I can't see it here, I can't see it there. It's a lousy drawing. Let's leave it there for today. But if you want to move forward, as long as I can see it, I'll be happy to go for it. Fair enough?
That's fine. One of the things maybe we can do is we can post it on a website, put on the sewer page of the area, that's what we're going to do. And if people have questions or concerns, they can either come into the engineering office or they can go down to sewer department, and we can point out individual parcels to people and blow it up on a map and get a better idea of what we can.
Well, so.
We went, we went forward with the main direction is through the businesses and get the businesses done and do that direction. So we did include, you know, one of the things I actually talked to Jim about is that we go up with a loop around Water Can Linkin, and, you know, we was considered that an area that we didn't want to address because of pollution problem.
Fair enough.
All right, you're satisfied?
We can stop declaring a parcel therapy. So, no. It's clear, we can go forward, they are fixed, so they're the parcel.
Fair enough.
We are not, there's not vote on our agenda for tonight, but I think that we've heard the consensus of the board that we're comfortable with the release of the RFP and forward to awarding a contract with their picture.
Right, so what we will do is we will send it out to probably about eight engineering firms that we work with, and we probably advertise it also, that whatever we're doing, but it out for a bunch of people to think of that. What we do on all the contracts, like we did on the Western and Sampson award that we did for the water mains, we do independent reviews, and then we pick who's the best qualified and evaluate the pricing at that point there. So we can vote locations, so it means we don't have to go to the whole city, we go to the most qualified city that's going to provide us with the best.
Are there any other comments on this matter from the board and the public?
At the risk of making Kevin correct, if the board ever wants to take part in the store, or the RFP, we've done that before, I know you've helped out on the water treatment plan that we scored down, you know, on that, so if the board wants to have a number to take in reviewing the RFPs, it's tremendously delicate.
I will volunteer. I will volunteer.
Some of us consider it exciting, reading all of it.
I love it. I even know the map. Maybe it's because I live in North Cituit, but I can point, I can easily read that map.
Not in this map, she does not live in this map, just put her right out. None of us do. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. I know the public, we have a bated breath in preparation. And we're so excited, as Senator Susan said, to move this forward, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
So we're still ahead of schedule. We're now on our eighty forty-five item.
Oh, we forgot about
Oh, goodness, what?
Eighty thirty.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I crossed it. Freedom Shirley, which was the
Thank you, ma'am.
Discussion vote on to designate our town administrators, the authorized rep for Mass DEP. Which was appropriate following conference that I just had, so. Kevin, are you putting this or?
I am. It's actually, would really just let me sign all the paperwork, keeping up on all the paperwork, filing all the paperwork, so. If someone just keep up on it, none of the projects.
So, yeah, just, so NEPA required, NEPA? No. Mass DEP requires we authorize someone to
I have no problem.
Have that authority. Any, any other questions? Well, just generally speaking, what we approved on these hearings, projects, at some meeting, et cetera, whenever.
Yeah, we can't go forward without the offices.
No, I just, I just want to find if we don't want to answer something else.
Yes, it doesn't let us unless we have to run.
Question asked, question answered. There you go. Any other questions on this? Thank you for pointing out, do you have the most?
That moved that the select board designate town administrator James Udrow as the authorized representative to sign, forward, accept, and take whatever action is necessary relative to the projects submitted by the town of Cituit or Massachusetts for a Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Clean Water Safety Remodeling Fund CWSRF.
I have a motion by Mr. Gilmore, so second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Canfield, yes. Ms. Conley, yes. Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you, unanimous, all in favor. They're hesitating on whatever actions. Right now.
Thank you, Will.
I haven't missed anything, we did get a little out of order. Thank you so much.
I have a twenty forty-five.
Is the award of contract for a supplemental comprehensive site assessment at the Stockbridge Road, the former Stockbridge Road landfill. Kevin, would you like to give us a?
So sure, this is, this is actually a change order. We have an original contract with time on, that done the original evaluations, and have been working with us in the evaluation of this landfill. This will be the third amendment. The original contract was ninety-two thousand. This is after the DEP has reviewed all the data that we submitted to them in the EPA with regards to the landfill, of the landfill, they requested additional information. We contracted by a bond to do the work, these are budget numbers, not exceed budget numbers, for them to do all the requirements that the DEP, EPA requested.
Thank you, Kevin. So just time-wise, DEP sent a letter at the end of May to the town that's sending forth these additional appointments. They had a further review meeting with the town at the beginning of July. And from that meeting, the parameters of the change order were defined of what additional work is going to be required. The contract is for a hundred fifty-nine thousand, seventy, seven hundred and fifty dollars to to complete this work. Are there questions from the board? Ms. Conley, what have we spent to date on this Stockbridge landfill? Just your.
I got a comment, two hundred and four thousand and fifty dollars.
And so this is on top of the.
Which I think it brings us up to a total of three sixty-three eighty hundred.
So people understand that this relates to a very, very old landfill that was not commissioned back in the seventies, I think.
It's closed, yes.
Yeah, so hundreds and hundreds of similar situations are in existence across the country. So this is not unique to Cituit, and there were different rules and regulations that existed then, that exist now, so in, in response to some concerns of citizens, Cituit did the right thing and undertook what we need to do to make sure that the definite bill is safe.
At the time, it's closed, and all the regulations required by the DEP, that's how it was.
But I actually, I actually went on to see these websites one week later a year ago and saw it's hundreds and hundreds of pages of similar landfills, or, quote, that exist all along, so. And that's a really good point. I will note that in the backup material, it reiterates what we discovered in prior investigations that the I actually wrote it down, the landfill cap is sufficient, and there's no indication that there's any public health or other concerns, that that's been satisfied. And this work is to do additional testing to just be, you know, settling for police work and address some corrective actions if the materials have migrated over the last seventy years or so. Are there any other questions on the matter? No? Would someone like to make a motion? Who moved that the select board awarded contract by additional services as requested by the Mass Department of Environmental Protection to the supplemental comprehensive site assessment at the Stockbridge Road landfill, the time on for a hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. Do you have a second?
Sir?
Move by Ms. Conley, second by Mr. Gilmore. Any further discussion?
Just, it's not a new contract, it's, it's an amendment to the contract.
All right, but it's additional.
It's additional funds, part of an amendment.
Yeah, okay. Any further comment? Motion on the floor, Mr. Griswold called, but Ms. Canfield, yes. Ms. Conley, yes. Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Mr. Goodrich?
Aye.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you, unanimous, all in favor. All right, thank you so much, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
The next step on our agenda is to open the warrants, if you're doing this for November eighteenth special town meeting. This warrant typically is opened for about a week, receded on our schedule, first be up until August twentieth, and will at that time, we will review those matters which we've been working with the town. So are there any questions or comments about opening the warrant for special town meeting? Saying not, but someone likes to make a motion.
Moved that the select board open warrant for the fall special town meeting STM to be held on Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion by Mr. Gilmore, second.
Second.
By Ms. Conley. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you, unanimous, all in favor. All right, thank you. The next, we are on to new business, which is to open discuss boards and committee appointments. We will not be considering waterways tonight, because there's another candidate that will be coming in in two weeks. But we do have many reappointments and we have the individuals who were here this evening not for waterways to consider. So are there any questions or comments on our advocates for this evening? Or let me say that, is there, are there any objections to appointing any of the advocates that were here this evening? I see no objection except, nothing except the waterways. We're not going to consider them tonight.
Correct.
So that would be, we consider appointment to historic commission, beach commission.
Sister cities.
And sister city.
Conservation.
And then we have reappointments to several. We have also the reappointment to conservation. And reappointment to the SCAR. Right, okay. Last meeting, we did have other candidates for beach commissions, but we postponed voting on those as well because we wanted to have all of them. But we do have openings for, for all of those. So if some of them would like to make motions, we'll take them all on.
Sure.
No, we're what?
Move to appoint John Whitaker as a member to the historic commission for a term of three years or until a successor's named. Move to reappoint following to the historic commission for a term of three years or until a successor's named. Suzanne Green, James Luskey, Stephen Litchfield as an associate nun. Move to appoint Stacy Abbott to the beach commission for a term of three years or until a successor's named. Move to appoint Gordon Price to the beach commission for a term of three years or until a successor's named. Move to reappoint following beach commission for a term of three years or until a successor's named. Moved to reappoint the following beach commission for a term of three years or until a successor's named. Alabada. Moved to appoint Jolena Amis to the sister city Cape Verde Committee for a term of two years or until a successor's named. Moved to reappoint the following to sister city Cape Verde Committee.
Committee?
Not committed. For a term of two years or until a successor's named. Taylor Lawrence. Moved to reappoint the following to the conservation commission for a term of three years or until a successor's named. Frank Snow, Richard Harvey, Jennifer Cole.
Seven.
Motion by Ms. Conley, second by Ms. Gilmore. Is there any additional conversation? And this requires a roll call vote. Ms. Campbell? Yes. Ms. Conley? Yes. Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
You have, thank you unanimous all in favor. Thank you, uh, everyone that raised their hand to help us with the boards and committees that support the work and we appreciate your help. Uh, our next is for liaison reports. Mr. Gilmore?
I have two committees to report on and I'll be as concise as possible. I have a meeting on August twenty-first with the, uh, sister city committee and Irish shared the trail over Ireland. Uh, we were supposed to have a meeting tonight with the Irish Council General. She's not coming down until tomorrow night, so obviously we're there. Uh, I will be notified, there's a temporary president there now in this committee. I will be notified there until a new committee president opens this coming week. I met last week with the, uh, the next committee, uh, the Cituate Diversity Act, who they included committee. And I've sent language to, um, to our chair, not this chair or
The real chair.
Our, yes, our alien chair. Uh, it was raised that, um, about a month ago, there was a, uh, an unsafe incident uh, that occurred in the town where there was some hate speech experienced. And the committee is thinking they would like to create a standard statement, much like the kind of statement that we read at the beginning of all of our meetings. A statement dealing with hate in the town policy for hate or not, obviously, that can be on the website, that can be, uh, issued by the police department if and when some unfortunate first happens, uh, that can be used as a standard statement. And that statement should be written by a joint group, police department, H R, town administrator, force, maybe the S D E I C individuals that are, are, are advocating that. They would like very much to do that, but then I'd like that to be considered as a new thing to adopt, not a bunch of call. But the statement, even, as I was saying, especially we're going into this political era right now with the next presidential election. And I think we can all remember the rotary with the last presidential election or even the one before that, the border tariff. Uh, where we need to have a policy on hate speech and how we all need to get along. And, uh, I'd like to all consider that. And if so, I could go back to the committee and maybe have them hook up with the police department and start that way. Maybe we should do this through, through Jim. What do you think?
Uh, the last time we had an issue, we worked with, uh, the D E I going there at Stollmont, came up with a statement and just, every, every incident is different, so it's hard to have a compact statement. Uh, we would be, we would sue it from up.
Well, if I may suggest that when we did handle it last time and, uh, with the, the statement that we now read in all the boards and committees, it took a while to do it and it was initiated, a draft was initiated by the D E I committee. And however, whoever they want to approach to get their opinions on, et cetera. Uh, they, they do that self of work and then they will come back to this board with a statement. And I will say that the briefer the statement, the better.
Yeah, and more focused.
Yes, and, um, I will point out that we do have to be careful. People do have freedom of speech. And so when you get into the issue of what is hate, hate speech and what is not, it gets very delicate. So, but I think that, you know, if, if we could create something that is brief, that is something that police could get out of their situation where they think just hold on, simply advising whoever knows that, you know, you don't like that sort of thing. And obviously, I hope it was more elegant, I think, but.
Right. Then I'll advise the S D E I C to go ahead like they did for that, draft a concise statement for similar.
Yes.
When they can reach out to police, they can reach out to H R member, um, and convince work on that.
Exactly. And they shall also ask the public to be able to, if they wish to.
Yeah. All right. Is that okay with you guys too?
Susan, Andrew?
Well, I just, I mean, I'd have, I wouldn't want it to take the place of if there was a certain incident that happened of a unique statement. So that is my input on that.
All right. Andrew, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I mean, it's always easier to respond to something, um, you know, once folks get it back. But I mean, I agree with, with Susan that we do want to make sure that it's not, that whatever, if there's a blanket statement, that's where we're not disregarding what actually maybe happened that's unique. So again, it might be easier to, to, to get, you know, more info from what, what folks are thinking, but, um, yeah. Let's see exactly what they're, what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, that, this is precisely why we set up advisory committees, is to have them think through all of these things and, and, and seek the information, seek the information that they need and come to us with recommendations. And I think if they, if they identified this, uh, they've done a great job on other exercises. I think great.
And so obviously, I'd like to say that in no way do I consider a blanket statement to be substituted for real dialogue with people, whatever the real incident was. I mean, clearly, it's, 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 nothing will cover everything, but sincere, uh, discussions, dialogues with people who feel as though they've been wrong by someone, by hate speeches, you know, we all have to be able to do that, I think.
Let me, let me just support this and follow along here. They still will issue individually. The statement I was drawn to was, was two twenty-twenty-one about the Chinese restaurant issue that we had. There was a particular statement drafted for that. The fact was the committee the other day brought the fact that we don't have a standardized general statement that we can put on the website that we can use as a, a blanket, this is our overall opinion, just like the thing you read at the beginning of the meeting. That should not detract from something that needs to be informed of a specific incident where that happens, whichever department is appropriate to issue that. So I think I'm in agreement with you guys, but I'll, with your permission, I'll just direct them to move forward and create something to submit.
Right. I s- I don't see any objection.
And lastly, I have one other thing that was raised to me, and this was a personal citizen calling me. There are recycling bins that the town takes care of in certain locations on a regular basis. Apparently they're the deposit can thing. And, uh, this individual asked me to have, see if we could convince to have some type of a sign up program, perhaps pay for the bags, some type of deposit for all five O one C threes to schedule, much like we used to do at the transfer station. I don't know if we still do that, where the, where the charity can go and collect the cans.
I don't think the town has any recycle.
I thought, where, we did let people do it at the transfer station, right? That's the only place we let them do it.
I, I don't, we eliminated all our recycling bins inside the town.
You don't do deposit can bins, separate bins?
None, I checked.
I've checked out.
We took most of them away because what was happening is people were just putting trash in there. And then the D E W would come to collect the recycled verses and it was useless. And, you know, they're not, they're not going to go picking through and find that some of the stuff through diapers and trash and recycling bin.
Right.
So as, I think most of them were locked in, I think, say.
All right, let's table that for now. Maybe we can find out if we have any locations that have those type of.
Yeah, it's the eternal trash.
It is.
It's eternal.
Do you know, Jim, if we even do it with a landfill anymore?
I don't really.
At the transfer station, forgive me.
I have, I have to check the capital.
We used to let groups do it there.
There was groups at the transfer station.
You're still?
Go every week.
Okay, well, that's the answer. There you go.
There.
All right.
I think American Legion and, um, a couple of the churches.
All right, well, we can look at, uh.
All right, fine. I'll leave you all alone with this.
Uh, Ms. Conley? Uh, yes, two things to report. Um, I went to a meeting in the whole park, where we developed the committee. The, uh, consultants and the engineers presented a report to the committee just last week and the committee has a lot to digest. Um, so I will say that, uh, the first time I could schedule a, a follow-up meeting to digest a report is September seventeenth. So I know the board had wanted the committee to come in, I think, a little prior to that, but I asked the chair if he could reschedule so that the committee has a chance to decide what exactly they want to present to the board. I will briefly tell you that it was, uh, some nice designs, three nice alternatives. But when the engineer, who's a whole expert, who understands velocity and all that scientific stuff came in, he literally threw whole water on almost everything. And so, um, not enough gain potentially for the problems that it possibly caused. But I know, but you know what? You have to go through it and you have to let the scientists do their work. And, um, so that's why I'm asking that we give that committee time to decide what, how they want to see these be this board. Um, the, uh, speaking of water, the, we have all the permits we need for the Pier Forty-four part. However, we still have to go through chapter ninety-one eight of the, that's the one that, that has to do with anything related to coast. And, um, even though that usually takes up to a year, uh, one of the consultants suggested it's possible that could, it could go as fast as six months, but, but they're proceeding to final design. And I think people will be happy to know that any design they are including a kayak slash canoe launch. So, but you know, every time we add something to any project, it's going to cost more and more and more money. And then finally, about that project, I talked to Jim the other day, uh, this board needs to decide whether or not we are interested in creating additional parking that will at least make up for some of the parking we're taking away from Pier Forty-four. We did have, um, D P gentleman looking at how many spaces we might be able to get on Jericho Road that is, uh, uh, that abuts the, uh, boat launch. And so I'll bring information to this board and everyone look at it. The, if the board agrees that we should do that supplemental parking, the question will be, do we want to go through C P C? Is it possible for them to fund it or are we going to have to add to that? And I don't have any figures as to what would cost, but, um, we postponed that discussion a year ago because the actual park process was taking a long time. And it's still, it's going to take another couple of years at least. So that's a lot.
Yeah. Any other? Uh, Susan, do you have any liaison reports?
I do. I have three things. Um, so, um, beach commission, um, there's the Egypt Beach Cleanup, August tenth, um, nine AM to noon. Um, that's good. Um, also in August, we're doing, we're planning a shellfish, um, relay. And that's again, bringing, um, shellfish up to the South River, um, sections of the South River in Cituate for, um, for potential harvest in, um, next season. And then my third one is Concom. Um, the, um, our, the responses for the design work of the parking, a border street, um, are back and we will be looking at those soon. So that's exciting. That's moving along too. So three very exciting things.
That's exciting. So they're going to look at the, uh.
Maybe one's more exciting to you, Karen, than the others, but we're all very exciting.
Will they, will they look at the proposed designs at the next meeting?
At the ne- um, at the next, our next meeting?
No, Concom, a day.
Um, that's, uh, well, their la- the meeting was yesterday, so, um, I don't know when the next meeting is. Their next meeting is like in a couple of weeks. So possibly, yes. Possibly. It's, it's close, Karen. I'm just saying, we're getting, we're moving along.
Yeah, this is a banner day. Um, is that?
North, North Cituate Sewer and Border Street. It's a big day for North Cituate. Big day.
Mr. Mr. Goodrich, have you a liaison report?
I was not able to liaise in my state.
Okay. Um, then I will say the only thing I would like to, uh, let the board know is that the renovation of the landscaping in front of the library has begun. Uh, lots of the, they equipment out there and they ripped out all of the, um, weeds and such and, uh, I have started the rebuilding today. So that was a long time coming. It's a good week. Uh, if that's all the liaison reports, we will move to our, for our correspondence report.
We have no correspondence.
Yeah, okay. Um, then I will uh, ask for us to, uh, motion to approve the select board minutes for July ninth and July twenty-third. Is there a motion? So.
Yes, sir.
Moved by Ms. Conley and second by Mr. Gilmore. Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, this requires a roll call vote. Move. Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you unanimous all in favor. All right. Uh, our final item on our agenda tonight is to, uh, for a motion to adjourn to sign off. Please. So moved by Ms. Conley. Second by Ms. Harrison.
Second.
And this requires a final roll call. Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Aye.
Mr. Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you unanimous all in favor. Thank you very much. Thank you all and, uh, hope you feel better, Andrew. Enjoy the rest of your vacation and Susan and we'll see you back at the ranch.